I'd like to call orders. The January 9, 2019 Committee of the Whole Council Meeting. Would you kindly stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, whose existence, our nation, our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I start on the agenda, I do have some congratulations. On New Year's Day, we had two people from up front here, actually take the plums, our own mayor and our counselor from the Seventh Ward, and I applaud. Who else went in?
Dawn.
Oh, and Dawn. Oh, my goodness. Did you wear your tutu?
I did.
Okay. Good. And our Vice President was there to cheer them on, right?
She was.
You got there?
Yes.
You were there.
She was at the registration. I did registration.
Okay.
That type of thing.
Wonderful.
Helped, but I didn't get it. Next year.
Maybe next year.
We'll see.
We'll see. Okay. Well, thank you all. Subcommittee.
It's off the bucket list, I'm not doing it again.
Sorry? Again?
I said it's off the bucket list, I'm not doing it again.
Well, it was warmer than other years. Say that, maybe. Infrastructure, Vice President Kulp?
Yeah, we had our meeting on December 20, 18. Licensing inspections on second cycle going well, rental property inspections going up as of January 1st. Fees to go to general fund and no profit allowed on those, on the rental property inspection charges. Parks and Rec, Memorial Park Phase III on track, hopefully finished in spring. Awarded $18,000 for Spruce Street Park. Y MCA equipment donated for two to five-year-olds and also adding new equipment. On the new tennis area that they're putting up is, it's going to be clear structure, it's going to be the size of the tennis courts, and it's going to be public meetings going out January 24th. Is that right?
Yes.
I'm not 100% sure on that date, but I could check for you.
There will be approximately 70 trees to be removed before our harbor ash board weakened and caused them to fall. They're already showing signs treating the trees is not cost-effective. 14 trees were planted in the fall. Letter into Harrisburg, D.C.E.D. requesting money for Pollock Park, 75% for inspection plus residential property inspections. Public Works, High Street at Berks blocked off, arch collapsing. Harrisburg and Pottstown working together to repair corrugated metal pipes at Charlotte High Cemetery collapsed, and both our state roads, so the state has to, you know, put their, do the work. King Street Bridge planning to replace hopefully starting this year. Issues with phone, gas, electric companies with services under bridge being worked out. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Economic Development, Ms. Lee Clark?
Good New Year, Councilors. Madam Mayor, so quickly, we are celebrating not a new business in town, but a business that is in growth mode tomorrow. Their new location is going to be on Schumacher Road in its turn five. They're an e-commerce company, and they are more than doubling the workforce. And as such, I'd like to announce tonight that there is an open job on the Capitol tomorrow between 3:00 and 8:00 p.m., 80 Robinson Street. The starting pay is $14 to $16. All community members are welcome, and please bring your resume. There are full-time and part-time positions available. The full-time positions will hold many minutes.
Good.
That's my report.
Thank you. Transportation, Vice President Kulp?
It's your packet.
Okay. Ad-hoc zoning, Counselor Prosser.
We had kind of an informal meeting, but we just have a few little things to nail down, and we'll be ready to push it through.
Animal Committee, Counselor Kirkland.
No report.
No report. Ad-hoc Financial Sustainability, Counselor Kirkland.
I believe we have a meeting coming up this month.
Yes.
Corrected. I believe they'll be giving us an update on what they have at this point.
Yeah, they'll, just to elaborate on that a little bit, they'll be giving us a report on the, kind of, the existing financial conditions analysis, as well as an overview of some of their main management recommendations as well. They won't have all the management recommendations finalized. They won't do that until we get feedback from the public through the public meeting and also the survey process, but they have started to look at that, and we'll discuss that with the committee.
Very good. Under the boards and committee reports, Emergency Services. Anyone from any of the fire companies? Okay. Human Relations. Ms. Levin, good? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you too. Happy 2019, Councilors, good evening. The Commission's January scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January 15th at 6:00 p.m., and we're going to be meeting here in Council Chancellors, and all are welcome to attend. Just a reminder, Monday, January 21st, is the Federal Holiday. Martin Luther King Day commemorates the birthday of Dr. King, who was influential in the American Civil Rights Movement, and he was an advocate of nonviolent activism in the struggle for the end of racial discrimination under U.S. law. In recent years, it is increasingly seen to be a day of service when Americans are encouraged to volunteer and help others less fortunate than themselves. Thank you.
Very good. Land Bank Report.
Nothing, nothing.
It'll tilt there.
Nothing much to report from the Land Bank. Our next meeting will be January 28th. The public is invited to attend. It meets here at 4:00. We are in the process of reviewing our policies, procedures, how we're going to operate. I believe those have been posted for public comment. I am not aware of having received any comments on those. Please, if you're interested, come on out or take a look or contact one of us, and we'll let you know what's going on.
Okay.
We're in a, kind of, a slow startup getting the process going business right now. That's all for the Land Bank.
Good. While you're there. Library?
Library.
Yes.
Couple of new programming notes for the library. We have a kindness crew on, one Saturday per month for kids ages eight to 14 at 11:00 in the morning. If any kids or their parents are looking for kid-friendly community volunteer activities, this is your outlet. I don't specifically know what the first couple of projects are going to be, but they're going to be, you know, community cleanup and support and packaging things up for folks. We also have a Spanish storytime. It is originally intended for little kids who speak Spanish, but also for those kids whose parents would like them to pick up just a little bit of a second language, because kids are apparently, when they talk to each other, they're apparently pretty good things, good at teaching themselves, each other. We're taking, we're undertaking an improvement project to better identify our users and potential donors based on the number of cardholders and patrons and donors from each of our four support areas. Interestingly, we're finding that a chunk of users and donors come from the surrounding municipalities in Chester and Berks County outside Monco. We do also have other municipalities surrounding us that have, where we have users and donors. But my thought is, this is obviously an attraction in Pottstown to our surrounding community, to families and individuals, so I think we should all be proud of the library that it's bringing people in from the outside. We're going to have a new fundraising project in the next three or four months. It's a charity auction. Get it? Charity. We're getting sponsors for the old wooden chairs that we've been using since 1963, and we're going to, we're going to get a sponsor, and then we're going to get artists to paint them, and then you all, as well as the public, will have the opportunity to bid on them. The painting will be a book or author or literary genre theme, and if you're interested in either sponsoring or being an artist or finding us an artist, let me know. And our Christmas tree, our Christmas book tree, which, which a couple of our board members came up with literally the week before Thanksgiving, with minimal effort on their part, we raised $1,700 from the public for donating to the, to the Christmas tree. Our tree was really small and short, so next year it will have to be bigger. Library Services Passport Fees continue to be a great revenue source for us, so please, if you know anybody who needs a passport, send it to us, because we get the fee rather than other agencies. And that's all.
Thank you. Do you do the paperwork for it, or just the pictures, or both?
The library will take your picture. That's a separate $10. And then we have certified passport agents. Just in case you wonder what librarians do in their spare time, they take passport agent certification classes, and most of the, the full-time librarians are all certified, and they will sit with you, and they'll go over all the documents, and they're trained to know what's a good one, what's not a good document, and they'll, they'll take care of you. If you just need a renewal, you can do those on your own, although the librarians are also willing to help, but we just don't make any fees from the renewals, unless you need a new photograph, and then it's $10. Thank you.
That's excellent information. So there's no need now to go to Norristown to get a passport?
No, there is not.
Now you tell me.
It's by, it's by appointment, there's a fairly big demand for it. Even with Pennsylvania finally adopting the, the real ID, we expect that the demand for passports will continue.
Are there hours?
The library hours are from 10:00 in the morning, and then depending on the day of the week, till 6:00 or 8:00, but it's by appointment only. There's usually a couple of weeks out, and Saturdays are particularly tough to come by. But call them, give them a call, and they'll provide something to fit in.
Now, do they submit as well? Because I know you do that at the post office. So you can do all, you can do all of your passport?
We call them down to the post office and they'll give you.
Excellent. Good.
Do you have cash? Do you, oh, it's a money order, because I know when you go to Norristown, there's no money order.
I don't.
Check, check, and some cash. I don't know.
The website, I, I think anything.
I think you could pay cash in Norristown. I just got my passport.
Okay. Thank you. Olive Boys and Girls Club, Counselor Kirkland.
There is a letter in your packets.
Right. Anything to add?
Nothing to add, but, but I do want to talk about their health and fitness program. I actually joined it last week. The cost is amazing. It's $15 for the span from now to August. It's $15. So it's like a half a year for $15, or a little more than half a year. It's called Boot Camp, and you get personal time with your trainer, you get full access to the weight room. My goal's 100 pounds, I want to lose 100 pounds, so that's my goal. So, yeah. I already lost 40, so, you know, I'm well on my way. But I, I just want to, you know, you know, put that out there, because it's a good program. The trainer is very good. You get personal time with him.
Is that Paul Winterbottom?
Yeah, he'll, he'll design a plan for you. So, I'm going to meet with him this weekend. I'm very excited about that, so, so, yeah. I just want to put that out there. $15 for, from now to August.
That's great. Thank you. Pottstown School District, Counselor Lindsay. Voulet Vou?
Unfortunately, yeah. Unfortunately, I didn't attend a meeting in December.
Okay.
But I will, this, this month.
Very good. And the Mayor's Report. You're thawed out and ready to go.
I'm thawed out. Happy New Year, everyone. Today is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so first, I would like to thank the Pottstown Police Department and ADA Bradbury, while you're sitting back there, for your exemplary service in protecting and improving the quality of life in Pottstown, so.
Yes, thank you.
We can all stand and recognize our police officers, I appreciate it. Yes. All right, I don't know about you, but 2018 was exhausting. I don't know how we fit all of this in one year, so I'm going to try to run down as much as I can in a little time, because I know we have a packed agenda. If you didn't make the list, that doesn't mean it was not important, it just means I am disorganized and didn't realize that 2018 calendar disappears off your phone. So I had to rebuild this. We had so much fun stuff in the borough this year. We had soup bowl fundraisers and ice cream socials at Art Fusion. We had Habitat Home Repairs, a number of home rebuilds, and two home dedications. And that reminds me, the last home dedication we had, I accepted this award from Habitat for Humanity on behalf of the borough, and I'd like to give this to Justin so that we can hang it in Borough Hall. It reads Habitat for Humanity of Montgomery and Delaware Counties. Thanks to Borough of Pottstown for supporting the rehabilitation of the Can GLOC family home. And that is the family.
That's nice.
And they were very appreciative of how easy it was to get the permits and licensing inspection for the rebuild, so. Number of businesses in our Main Street made the Montgomery County 2018 Happenings List. We had a climate march and climate rally. Bark for Life. We had lots of races. We had goat races, duck races, bike races, regular 5Ks, where actually people just, I think, just run for the fun of it. We had Run to Farm, Hobart's Run 5K. Did I mention the goat races? EcoFest. Pottstown Farm. We had the farmer's market opening. An enormous effort from the community in a cleanup of Edgewood Cemetery, so I'd like to thank Andrew Manostro for heading that. We had a Go Forth Festival with fireworks this year. Regional Night of Prayer. Lutheran Church Panel Discussion on Who Are Our Neighbors. We planted 100 trees in the new tree nursery, thanks to Rotary and Tom Hilton. We had National Night Out. Unity in the Community. We had an organization called Code Red come to Steel River and present on school gun safety. We had Fete en Blanc. We had Pet Fair. We had the Latin Festival. We had the powwow on the Manatani Creek. Carousel of Flavor. Can Jam Music Festival. We had lots of events circling around food and drinks. We had the Cheese Tober Fest. We had a beer festival. We had food truck festivals. Mark Wahlberg's hamburger, Wahlberg's food truck came to Pottstown. I went, because I was told he was going to be there, he was not, but it was really good. We had spooky golf, Halloween parades. We had Random Acts of Kindness Month in October. We had college fairs and job fairs and educational rallies. We had the Children's Holiday Project and toy drives. Rock the Block and other community cleanups. We had Drop Everything and Read Day at Rupert Elementary. Santa and his helpers came to town. We had a number of holiday events in December, which, too many to mention, but they're on Facebook. I'd like to thank all of the Downtown and Padita for setting that up. We got bad guys and drugs off the streets, thanks to our police department. We had, got a new chief of police, a new borough manager, and two new council members, Trinita and Dawn. We got new businesses, and I know I'm missing a bunch, but to name a few, Pottstown United Brewing Company, the Farmer's Market, Splitting Edge, Red Horse Motoring Club, Donut Envy, and I Corumbataca. So I have to say, this is not a complete list by any means, but that was a lot in 2018, and it was a lot of fun, so I'm excited to start 2019. Thank you for humoring me and jumping in the Scoopel River in a tutu, I appreciate it. I'm a little disappointed, the rest of you didn't respond to my text, that was mandatory. Except for Trinita, you, I gave you an excuse. You weren't here to. So next year, I expect everyone up here, Dan, Chuck, and Evan.
And Justin.
And Justin, and Jenny, and I, I will get more tutus. I had three. I'd like to thank Hannah for putting on a tutu and jumping in with me. And I'd like to try to, this year, focus on the kids and students in the borough and working on other events for them and other opportunities. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Now the managers report, and you've got to follow that.
Well, that was, that was quite a list, and I'm not even going to attempt to try to follow that, because we have a lot of important applications up for consideration tonight. I just, I just do want to pass out a notice to everyone that in Riverfront Park this year, we've started to notice the signs of the Emerald Ash Board on some of the trees there. We had an initial inspection in the fall of 2018. We went back in early, this, this, this month, and made another inspection, and the damages considerably worsened in that area. So right now, we're starting to take a focused approach on removing some of the ash trees before they become hazards to pedestrians in that area by focusing on the trees within the fall zone of the Schoolka River Trail. These are, would be ash trees that are already showing signs of ash board damage. We anticipate removing about 15 to 20 trees along the Schoolka River Trail this, this winter. We're exploring avenues to have larger caliber trees harvested while they can still be put to a productive use, such as baseball bats. Is there some of the, you know, uses that, that some of the timber companies are interested in, and we may even be able to get a reduced cost or a removal at no cost at all if they're able to convert our trees into usable products? And we, just to note, we do not plan to remove any of the trees on, on steep slopes or the riverbanks at this time due to the stabilizing qualities that they currently provide there. So just, just to let everyone know that if you, if you see some activity down there, if you see some trees coming down, that is what we're looking at there. And unfortunately, I mean, it's, it's, it's a problem across the borough, and there's not a whole lot of options that you can do. There are certain insecticides that, that you can, that you can try to apply, but it's going to be something we're going to battle with for a number, number of years, I'm sure. Other than that, things are moving forward, looking good in the year. We're still getting a lot of development interest, which is always a good thing. We are going to be moving forward with interviews for our fire chief and fire marshal, which, which is a combined position in the next, in the next couple of weeks, and hopefully we'll have a recommendation for council soon.
Very good. Thank you. We now have a presentation for the 2019 Bike Race. Dawn?
Um, how can you, I see for your approval for the fourth annual Pottstown Bike Race? As we do every year, we meet after the race, and we kind of go through the motions as to what was good, what was bad, and, you know, what things need to be improved, what things need to work on. The longer the shorter it is. To summarize, a meeting that included the police department and many of the town clergy, our borough manager, and a few other folks, we explored other options for the race course. And so we have basically agreed on, of course, on the east end, you have in front of you two papers. One is a draft of the race flyer that has been submitted to the USA Cycling Association and to the Pennsylvania Cycling Association, that outlines the details of the race from the racer's perspective. The other paper is the race course. This is what has been investigated and, and in terms of what would be a feasible course with respect to distance, burden on the community, for lack of a better word, and, and the condition of the roads. I've personally gone around that entire race course and knocked on every door of every person on that race course, and I spoke with every single one of them that were home. And not because I wanted to put the cart before the horse with saying that we had approval, I told them we were seeking approval, and I was looking for their feedback. I'm perfectly frank, I got an earful about the bike lanes, but I immediately diffused that and kind of refocused them as to what this was to be. As a result of visiting all of those people, I can honestly tell you that I left the community with one unhappy person. And I know exactly where that house is, and we will make that right before it's over. But, but nonetheless, I, I think that they're willing to give us a chance, is what I'm saying. So, and I think we, we're, we're listening above all, and we're, we're trying to be good stewards of the community, bring a good event, and we just seek your support. Any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we now have a presentation from 1432 High Street, the High Street Plaza. It's fine.
Good evening, Council, good evening, Mayor. Thanks for your time tonight. My name is Aaron Rapucci. I'm with Catalyst Commercial Development out of Conshohocken. I'm here tonight with Gabe Clark, who is my business partner on the project, behind the easel, and Dave Lasanti, who's our civil engineer on the project. The property that we're here to talk about tonight is 1432 East High Street, just east of the McDonald's with the beloved Three Brothers Mexican Grill in the property. We're here because we want to redevelop the property, have some challenges that we've spent a lot of time, we've worked with, with your staff, been very helpful. I've spent a lot of time tackling this, and we're here seeking a waiver of land development. Not, we're going to, I'll show you, we're going to put a lot of, a lot of time and attention and money into redeveloping this. We are here seeking a waiver of land development because we, it will add some time, some cost and complexity that will prohibit us from proceeding with the project. Property as it stands, many of you, we'll show you pictures of it later in the presentation, but I'm sure many of you are aware of it. It is largely packed to the gills in terms of, we are at the, the, property pushes up against our boundary, sort of at every, at every boundary here. Current property is 15,734 square feet. There are 37 parking spots currently at the property, and it's pretty much all impervious coverage right now. There's about 50 or 60 square feet of open space in the entire property. What this does on the inside of the, the property here, it creates a little bit of a challenging, well, a very challenging leasing scenario. This is, this is the inside, how it's sort of divided up right now. Subway sits here. It's very choppy layout, not very contiguous, and what, what the situation as it sits is there's a lot of very, sort of, choppy spaces that are challenging to lease, quite frankly. What we are proposing is a removal, demolition of the subway out front. What we are proposing is a removal, demolition of the subway out front. Well, we're, we're proposing a lot of things. That is the, that's the main change. We're proposing a demolition of the subway, and you'll see what that does for us, but sort of a large bird's eye view here, that creates a continuous storefront. It cleans up the storefront quite a bit. It allows us to add an additional three, excuse me, four spots. So we go from thirty-seven parking spots to forty-one parking spots. As you'll see in a picture later, this allows us to move the trash enclosure that is right up on the street, right up on High Street in this corner right here. It allows us to get it off the, back off the street, which cleans up sightlines. It's, just doesn't look good right now. It also allows us to create a little bit more open space, add a little bit more landscaping. Now, it is tight, so there's not a lot of room to work with, but in addition to meeting with the staff, I will say that we met with the planning commission a few weeks ago. We received some feedback. Aside from adding open space and some green space, it allows us to add some of the red brick fencing with the black aluminum, the, the red brick pillars with the black aluminum fencing, where we're creating new parking here and over here, and you'll see that, that later in a rendering, to sort of create similar motif. We heard that was important to the planning commission, and we'll show you renderings later of what we've come up with, with our architect. We're able to create a little bit of fencing in addition to our green space. So what we've, you know, we feel this is a benefit. Oh, it'll also allow us to remove the billboard from, that spans from the subway to this portion of the building. So removing that, removing that, that square footage, you know, we're reducing our gross leasable square footage. So it sort of goes against what most developers want, which is to cram as much square feet, the square footage on a property as possible. For us, we feel like it really helps us to clean up the, the lot, create more parking, create more open space, remove that billboard, which doesn't look great. And so what is a result of some of these moves? What we just showed you was what we presented, flip back one more time, Gabe. What we just showed you, this is what we presented to the planning commission last Dave astutely added, this, this shows some of the changes that we made from the planning commission meeting. It shows the, the fencing here and here. We had to shrink this parking feature back in order to get the pillars and the fencing on our, on our property. This is the property boundary right here, so it allows us to, to build on our property. So those, those steps is what I, is what I was just describing, allows us to create. Oh, and here's the color rendering. This will give you an idea of some of the green space. There's the new dumpster enclosure, green space, fencing, additional green space, and fencing here. What this does for us is this allows a cleaned up leasing plan. So as of now, we have Dollar General, who is very interested in actually allowing us their potential rent and credit. They want to take this space right here, so this allows for a clean footprint. Currently all vacant. This is Three Brothers Mexican right now. We would be expanding them to get them more space. They are doing very well, and this will give them a dining area. King Pizza will have a little dining area, so we'll, we'll expand King Pizza. And Metro PCS, who's now on the end cap, which, you know, we like the end cap for restaurants, a little bit, creates a little bit of vibrancy, and is just a nice way to sort of create energy in the center. We're moving, would move Metro PCS over to this location. So this would create a full lease up, lease up plan, and what we think is much, much more cleaned up leasing plan. This is what it looks like right now. In terms of the outside look and feel, we'll show you our renderings in a second. What we are doing to the outside, we're, we want to create a cleaned up, modern storefront. From this view, you can see, the other thing that we don't, we don't like is that you can see all the rooftop units very easily from, from the street. The site right now, you know, part of the challenge with the site is it's down below grade a little bit. So it's kind of hard to see the storefronts. We are going to raise the parapet up to try to improve visibility, try to get signage up higher, and to try to hide some of those rooftop units. We're also going to clean up the pylons, which we'll show you later, especially this one. We're going to remove that just because it doesn't, just superfluous and doesn't give a clean look. And then this, you know, this trash enclosure, we want to move that back off the street. I think we have one more, one more view from the other angle. Again, the billboard will finally come down. So here's, here's what we came up with, with some feedback from the planning commission. We, you know, we're in front of them, we heard that matching some of the brick that's currently in place was important. The brick is a, it's an add for us, it's an additional cost. It's, it's about fifteen dollars a square foot, more expensive than the EFS, but we're willing to add some of this brick to help match the look. Here, we'll, we'll match the, the brick pillars and the fencing on this side and on that side. So that's one view. We'll just show you a couple of other views here. It's hard to tell. The parapet, we are, depending on wind loading, we're trying to get it three to four feet higher to help get some sign of visibility, and again, to block some of the, the rooftop units there. Just another view. So our sign proposal, we would just propose reusing the, the subway pylon sign for the Dollar General sign. We will remove the King Pizza, I guess you'd call that a flag sign, to clean that up. And then we would completely redo the pylon sign that's there right now. That's, has a lot of signs sort of just tacked on, and it's very rusty and old. So I think what we're, what we're trying to get across is that though we're seeking a waiver of land development, which helps us in several ways, we are putting a lot of thought into this. I, I won't reiterate myself too much. Just quickly, we're improving our parking ratio, we are decreasing impervious area. All told, there's not a lot, lots to work with, but we're going from about fifty to sixty square feet of open space to over five hundred, about five hundred and sixty square feet of open space. New dumpster location backed off the street, cleaned up and professional pylon sign, the billboard removed, modern storefronts, concealed HVAC units, repaired sight lighting to create a safe condition. And then we're going to seal and stripe the parking lot just to make it look nicer. With that, Dave, do you want to come up and just talk about our waivers request? Did I miss anything, or do we want to open it up to questions before we get into waivers, or?
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions, comments, thoughts, before we just tick through the waiver requests real quick?
Well, actually, I'm a frequent patron of Three Brothers, and I agree, that's kind of an awkward combination of angled and straight parking there, and I think that your improvements that you've planned will be a great asset.
We were there before we came here, so, as often as we can go.
I know that parking lot has a lot of, you know, it's all in place. How were you able to do that?
Yeah, with, with the sealed and striped, I, we're going to patch, if there, wherever there's bumps, cracks, with our sealing and striping, there will be some places where we'll have to saw cut, repair, and then the sealing and striping will create a uniform look.
It seemed like even the way your parking lot was, it seemed like the water would run towards the building. It seems like there was some situation way back.
You're right. Yeah, right now, the water drains under the building. The, the drainage pipe goes, that goes under the building is completely backed up with leaves and completely jammed. So we would go through and jet all that out, clean that, so that the, the stormwater would, would act like it was designed to, whatever it was.
So it'll still go towards the building, but it'll?
Yeah, we, we can't.
So it actually has pretty adequate drainage, even though the driveway does, or the parking area does slope towards the building. There's actually, and you can see it on the first plan that Aaron, Aaron was showing here, there's actually multiple inlets in front of the building. So, and, and they do a pretty good job. I mean, so they're, they're, they're sumped, they're in a sumped, sumped situation there. And, you know, the parking runoff does go to them, and they, they drain to a pipe, and that pipe needs to be cleaned. But it's, it's adequate, and it drains towards the back alley, and, and I think that they'll probably reuse, reuse that drainage system and continue that in the, in the proposed condition.
I see you took the, that, that end off, subway, we could talk about, for some additional parking. Did you find that that last couple spots, is that a little tight to get out of air, or is it, is it to back up and?
We, so we'll be providing, yeah, we'll be providing the, the required, the required driveway width for a ninety-degree parking space, so that's one good thing. But the other thing is that we do have the ability to provide a little bit of a bump out. So it's about a five, five foot, five foot bump out. So I think that the combination of providing enough width there and an additional five foot of bump out, that probably is adequate for, for a car to pull in and out of there.
So the car have to go straight back, and then pull, and then it gives you left?
The car will have to pull back, but you, it, it will be able to angle itself a little bit towards that bump out area. This is what I'm talking about here near the, in front of the, the trash enclosure. So it's about, it's actually about five feet. You can't really tell because of the curvature here of, of the curve there, but, but it's actually about five feet, and that's usually, it's usually about adequate for a car to maneuver.
We, we had a little bit more clearance. We moved it, we tightened it up to be able to fit the fence on our property.
So.
Take through the way.
Yeah, well, so I just wanted to give an update on the status. So we, we have been to the planning commission, obviously, and, and we've received comments from them. We've also had a zoning determination, and there are no zoning issues with the project, so we won't be going to the zoning hearing board for anything. We do have a list of waivers. At the top of the, the list is most of the procedural stuff that applies to our request for a waiver from the subdivision of land development process. And then the remaining waivers, which I'll, I'll go through if you, if you desire, would be pertaining to specific requirements that would be a burden to the project. So we did receive a review letter tonight from the, from the borough engineer. We haven't been able to fully digest it yet, but they did a, a review of the sketch plan that we, that we've already created and that you've seen, which was part of the packet tonight. And we can discuss that if, if that's also something that you guys want to, anybody wants to discuss, the contents of the, of the, of the letter.
When did you receive that letter? Because I don't think anybody at the front has, has seen it yet.
Yeah, we received it about 4:30.
Okay, well, that explains why. Okay.
One thing we, we did in meeting with the planning commission, sought, sought comments, feedback, and have incorporated some of those things, not all, but some of them, in particularly the Gateway District look and feel of the brick pillars, the, the fencing, adding brick to our facade. And I think it's important to note that, you know, with, without our desire to do these, these, you know, really strong improvements to this project from a look and feel, that we would be permitted to simply put this tenant in and, and, you know, lease it per zoning. So we don't, we don't, that's not our intent, we don't want to do that, but we were here with you guys to talk about how can we improve the project. And the purpose of the request of the waiver is simply that we're not, you know, unduly burdened, I guess, you know, when, when we're seeking to make some substantial improvements. So with that being said, any more questions you guys have?
You have some time restraint? Is that one of the reasons for the request?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
And waiting another month would hinder?
It's not so much another month.
We, we are, Dollar General has a lease to us, and they want us to sign it ASAP, and they want us to deliver to them in August. So there is a time constraint, and it is their credit and rent that's allowing us to make these improvements.
So what, the answer of hearing is?
The answer is yes. There's a, a delivery time constraint.
Waiting another month could hinder the project?
They want us to sign it yesterday, and.
Well, we, we've heard that before.
Yeah.
Waiting another, land development in our, our minds is not just another month, it's several months of process and procedure. So I guess that's our perspective, if that, if we're wrong, but that's kind of our hesitancy.
I understand that. The time I'm asking for is for council to act on this.
Oh.
Would it, would it harm you for council to study this until next month?
Is it because of the township, or the borough engineer's review letter? Does that have some?
Yeah, we, we haven't seen that letter or any other communications. Just give me an honest answer.
Yeah, I'll be honest, it would, it would be a hardship for us.
Okay.
Can we do like a emergency meeting between before that, or when you do?
Possibility.
I, I think, I mean, I'd just like to add, add here, I think what they're requesting is a waiver of the land development process, not a waiver of the land development rules per se. So there are a number of waivers that they are going to request, but they would still need to meet all the land development plan requirements that would otherwise be, be required. They're simply just asking for a waiver of the time constraint to go through the full, the full process.
I don't see the need to hold them up. I'd be happy to vote it on Monday.
Yeah. How's this going to affect the businesses that are already there with the improvements and things like that?
That's, that's a good question.
I assume they're all in favor of it, too, because it looks like they're being proved upon. I'm sure all the businesses are in favor of it, right?
So we are going to do this, we're going to do this in phases. So the subway will come down, this will get opened up, we will put a demising wall here and here for the Metro PCS space. We'll be able to improve everything up to King Pizza here. So King Pizza and Three Brothers will be allowed to operate as is. So we'll be able to do a bulk of the work, keep them in place, and once we get this space finished, we'll be able to move Metro PCS in. And from there, there, these two tenants are largely going to keep their current configurations in place. They're just, this is then going to let them open up to get dining area and vice versa. King Pizza will be able to open up to get dining area over here. So for them, it'll be relatively seamless. We've done other shopping center renovations that haven't been quite as seamless because you have to shut them down, and you, and we will have to do storefront, storefront improvements on their spaces, which they're aware of, but.
They're all very much in favor, and we've had a number of discussions with them.
But you're not really going to have to do anything on the insides to like, close them down for any length of time or anything like that?
Correct, yeah, it'll be the store. So we'll be able to do King Pizza's work on this side, and then whenever this gets opened up, it'll, they'll be walking into a finished space. The Metro PCS is already largely finished, and vice versa, they'll be able to do any improvements they need over here, so when they open up, they're essentially opening up into newly fit out space.
Okay, thank you.
And Super Pastor tacos will still be on the menu?
I hope so. I had four tacos tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, just, just a comment, and we haven't had the benefit of seeing the consulting engineer's review letter. I suspect, and I haven't looked at it, so I don't know what it says, I would be surprised if they don't recommend to you that you go through a formal land development process. The engineer would naturally say that. With that being said. With that being said, as Justin indicated, regardless, if you choose to waive the land development, you're waiving a process as opposed to substance. So, the only things that they're asking for relief from our ordinance technically would be the waivers that they've indicated. Many of these waivers are normal waivers you would grant anyway following a land development process. I don't want to be presumptive and say you'd grant them all, but they would have to comply with all the other requirements in our ordinance. There would still be plans submitted, the plans will be reviewed by our engineer and obviously licensing inspections would look at the, the plans as well. So, it would all be reviewed, but what wouldn't happen would be a return trip to the planning commission with preliminary land development plans and then obviously coming back through this process. So, if you were inclined to grant the land development waiver, and if you did that Monday night, I suspect there would be a list of conditions that they would have to meet and presumably, you know, they would have to agree to them if they wanted to waive the land development. So, ultimately, it's discretionary with you to waive it, but if you're satisfied with the level of improvements and what's being proposed, we can make sure the conditions catch those issues so that then when they go to construct, there will be parameters under which they have to develop the property consistent with what you're looking at as far as the sketch plans and the elevations and that kind of thing. So, it's all your call and kind of feel odd that I can't even tell you anything about what the engineer letter said because I haven't seen it at all, so.
As a spoiler alert, you, you hit the nail on the head. They recommended that we have to go through the whole process and they had.
Reasons.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if we would, say we would approve this Monday night and we saw the engineering report, if, if there would be any kind of issues during the process, would we be able to address that during the reconstruction and that?
Sorry. Carol, what I was going to suggest is, I'm sure staff will digest that letter between now and Monday night and, and bring up any issues that we see, but, but certainly, there will be the ability to talk with the developer during the construction process, but I would want to make sure that everybody understands what's being built, what the conditions are up front, rather than surprising anyone either way.
Right.
As far as what's going on at the site. So, we'll try and have some recommendation to you for the information in your packet on Monday. But again, having not seen the letter, I don't really know what specifically we can say more about it tonight.
Normally, that, the engineer's letter would also be copied to those of us sitting on the planning commission, but we'll see that each of the counselors gets a copy of that and you'll have the week, weekend to study it until Monday. If you want to discuss it with anyone, let me make this clear, you may talk to another counselor one-on-one at any time, but there should be no communications to more than three at any one time. But feel free to discuss it, you know, one-on-one. Call Justin, call staff, whatever. If you have any doubts about legality, call our solicitor. And so, at this point, I'll suggest that we list this for action for Monday evening.
Okay, so the grand scheme of land development, this is relatively minor, and actually they're reducing the footprint of the.
But after you read the engineer's letter and review the, the list of waivers that they're requesting, you know, think about it, talk to others, and we'll come back and do something Monday evening.
Okay. And just, just for council's edification, the planning commission had a pretty long dialogue about this at their December meeting and talked about a lot of different issues. Just like you, planning commission saw it for the first time, but I know individual members of the planning commission did provide input to the applicant so that they could consider changes. And I think some of the suggestions will, have been incorporated into your, into your revised design. I don't know that all of them have, but I know some of them have.
Yeah, just high level, I'll just end with, you know, our thinking is, we are reducing leasable area, improving parking ratio, improving open space. There's just a lot of things that are very prohibitive and complex about the land development process. So, our goal is to create a great project that is a big improvement, but there are, there are a lot of obstacles that the land development process would open us up to that would be prohibitive, so. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
See you Monday. Number nine, Creative Health, long-term structure residence.
I'm Rick Field, O'Leary Associates. I'm here with Peter Trenikos, the CEO of Creative Health, also Kathy Kamitis, who is the COO.
What we have before you is a redevelopment at 71 Robinson Street. Creative Health purchases property back in, I believe it was May of 2018, was a former site, I believe, of the Palladino Roofing Metal Fabrication Business. The property is about 1.14 acres and contains an existing L-shaped building, roughly about 8,700 square feet. It also had an access driveway with parking spaces as well as a large paved area to the rear of the building, which contained parking as well as loading areas. The Creative Health proposes to renovate and redevelop this parcel for use as a long-term structured residence. I think Andy can talk a little bit about what that uses. I believe they have a similar use up at their property at 15, I think it is, Robinson Street.
So, real brief, a long-term structured residence, it's a licensed program for adults, a treatment program where they also live for adults with serious persistent mental illness. It is exactly the same type of program we have at our location at 15 Robinson Street. So, this would be our second. Good enough?
The renovation in the facility, what's going to happen is, the existing building is going to consist of six, I'll say, bedroom units, each containing two beds. There will be a, an activity area, a work area, and then a small vestibule and offices. There'll also be a mezzanine, I believe, a very small mezzanine for, I think that's work and activity areas also up above. Then, in the rear, there's going to be an independent cottage, 1,600 square foot unit, which is going to contain, I guess, really one bedroom, or two bedroom units containing two beds each. So, the, I believe the purpose, the way that works is the treatments and will occur for the majority of the patients in the existing building. And then, some will transition to more of an independent living style to then assist them to, to transition back out into the communities. So, what we will do is, we're going to be reducing the impervious coverage on the property by roughly about, I believe about 10% less coverage. We're going to modify the, the parking area to the right of the building and also install a parking lot to the left of the building. We currently are showing 27 parking spaces. In initial conversations with, with Mr. Place, early on, before plans were submitted, there were some approximate parking requirements, which, which came out to about 27, just based on the square footage of the building. Once the plans were, were more formalized and the, and the uses internally were known and the planning commission brought this up about, you know, basically, we were in need of roughly, we brought 17 spaces, it's been determined to be 20 spaces, but the planning commission suggested that we reduce the parking down to the 20 spaces. I did have a conversation with Mr. Place last week to solidify the parking requirement of 20 and the Creative Health is, has no problem with reducing down the parking to the 20 spaces. That's more than enough for what they believe they need. That will also help us to further reduce the impervious coverage by, I think about five, five more percent. The way the property currently drains, from a small portion of the front drains out to Robinson Street, the vast majority of the property drains back to, towards the railroad tracks, ultimately down the embankment, then, then down to the Manitoni Creek. The project as proposed will maintain those same flow paths. We've, we've graded it in the sense that, that, you know, we won't be impacting adjacent properties, like the existing drainage patterns will, will be maintained. The current building was served by public water and sewer. We will continue to utilize public water and sewer. The, Dick Franz is the applicant's architect. Him and a representative from our office met with Mr. Yerger to come up with the, you know, the replacement of the laterals as well as the connection of the proposed cottage. So, we have that solidified. We submitted a, or the borough submitted a request for an exemption from sewage planning to DEP. That is currently under review. We're under an acre of disturbance, so we don't need an NPDS stormwater permit. So, it, it should be a fairly straightforward project. We were before the planning commission, I believe it was December 19th, reviewed the Cedarville review letter. Essentially, those, those comments were, will comply. There were two waiver requests. One was from, let me see if I have it here, sections 400.3. A and 402.1 and 2. That's with showing existing features within 100 feet surrounding the property. We are requesting just a partial waiver. Your borough engineer requested that we show additional topography over on the Robinson Street LLC side. We did go out and actually get that, that topography and what had happened was, they wanted to ensure that that runoff was getting back to the rear of the site and not impacting their property, which we did that and the final plan submitted for, for recording plan check, we'll show those, we'll show that. And then, since we are reducing the impervious coverage and maintaining the flow, pre-development flow paths, we requested a waiver from providing stormwater management, you know, calculations, et cetera. We did do a worksheet to submit, which we did submit informally to Cedarville, that did compute the drainage areas as well as the reduced, reductions in area. So, so, you know, they will, they will have that as part of the final submission also. So, the planning commission, if I recall, did recommend preliminary final approval as well as the waivers. And, you know, we're here to answer any questions and hopefully if the council chooses to entertain for, for Monday night's meeting, you know, and put the motion for approval for resolution.
Okay, I can confirm, I do sit on the planning commission and the commission did recommend approval and we have the understanding with the waivers. Recommendation is to go for it. Any questions? Yeah, and I think Mr. Field did a good job of pretty much summarizing the discussion. A large part of the discussion was the excess parking that was originally being shown and that's going to be reduced. And I'm not sure, just to let council know, Creative Health, before they even submitted this plan, has made a proposal to the borough for a contribution for a traffic signal to be installed up there. And it was very generous of them to do that. And obviously, that is not related to the plan, but should you choose to approve the plan, we'll make sure that gets included as the appropriate condition so we can start that traffic light fund for when we have additional monies to, to help the situation up at that end of the borough. So, you'll see two motions on the agenda on Monday night. One is to recommend or, or grant preliminary final approval and then the second would be to grant the two waivers that are being requested. Very good. We'll see you Monday.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Number 10, Burger King Family Dining, 1515 East High Street. Anyone here for that?
They come on Monday.
I don't know, but I told them it'd be listed, but they don't have to be here.
No. Let me start. This particular project, it was presented at planning a few times and the end-all is that planning is in favor of this project and approved some of the waivers that they requested.
I don't know if you have the details with you.
Sure. Six D.
It's the East End, East End Burger King project and it's a redesign of the existing site. I think primarily what they're doing is they're changing the driveway access from the beach street and allowing a circulation around the building from access to High Street. There'll be a minor addition, I guess, a play area in the front. And there'll be a slight parking lot configuration. So, planning commission, subject to seeing a landscape plan, which was produced at the last meeting, seemed satisfied with it. They wanted, planning commission requested the applicant provided additional landscaping detail. Planning commission, I believe, wanted certain types of trees as a proposed to what they was proposing, I think, plane trees in lieu of honey locusts. I think they were short about six trees altogether. Planning commission recommended a fee in lieu of those trees. And planning commission did recommend borough council preliminary final approval, subject to the compliance with the engineer's letter, the county planning commission letter. There were a number of waivers that were being requested, given the fact it's a redevelopment of an existing site. Planning commission did recommend those waivers as well. So, I suspect the applicant will be here Monday if you have questions, but I think you have the, the plan and the review letters in your packet. So, if you have any questions, we'll certainly try and answer them now and if not, Monday night.
Yeah, I read Brian's from Montgomery County Planning Report and I guess basically what you said is just, you know, the aesthetics of, you know, probably adding knockout roses or brushes like that.
There are two basic changes. One, they're adding a playroom. And two, in talking with their management, their consumers are changing. They'd rather drive-through than walk-in, so they want to double, have a dual drive-through.
Like McDonald's.
Yes.
That's a very peculiar drive-through that they have.
Yes, well, that, that really wasn't a drive-through when it was first constructed, Ryan. They added that on later after the fact. They indicated that the building style, if you look at that building, is a late 60s, early 70s architectural style for Burger King. So, they'll also be upgrading the appearance of, of how that building looks. So, again, that area of town will be upgraded to become a little more modernized, I suppose. So, if there are no further questions, we'll list this for movement on Monday evening. Number 11 is being removed this evening about the Pottstown Municipal Airport. 12 is part drug and alcohol program. Mr. Keller.
Yeah, so this is parts drug and alcohol program that applies to the drivers, which is required by the state and federal government, so just an update to that policy.
Okay. That. 13, Pottstown Parks and Recs Foundation 5K. Anyone? Is that you?
Yeah, it is me. So, this is for the 5K race on July 4th, 2019, a quest enclosure of Beach, Prince, High, Hanover, Chestnut, and Grant from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
Okay. No questions? We'll list that. 14, towing license bid award.
So, we have a recommendation to award to Mann's Towing and Road Service.
Mm-hmm.
And Santogah. Oh, here's Santogah Autobody. So.
Okay.
Two, two, two options there.
No questions on that? Move that Monday evening. 15, amendments to subdivision ordinance to advertise a public hearing. This is somewhat overdue.
Correct. Just leave it on.
Yes, this should sound familiar.
This should sound familiar to council because I think we talked about it last June. The ad hoc zoning committee had come up with minor subdivision and land development procedures to attempt to simplify simple plans. I think at the time, council requested that we hold off advertising it till we had some other ordinances ready to go. No ordinances are ready yet, so at this point, we're recommending that you allow us to prepare notices for public hearings so the changes to the SADO can be incorporated and adopted within the next 60 days. Okay. Then we'll list that for Monday. 16, keep the specific plan. There's an outline in your documents? Anything to add?
No, just that this is the same plan that was presented to council several months ago and it has now gone through the 45-day review process with the school district and the municipalities and it's essentially ready for council's final adoption.
Very good. So, we'll list that for Monday.
We'll list that for Monday. Okay, 17, to appoint an assistant borough solicitor. It came to our attention that this position was available to us for a number of years, and we never had it filled. So, on the light side, in the event that Mr. Garner hits the Powerball and leaves, we'd like to have someone in the wings, ready to go. And it's also part of our sustainability program, and most corporations, most organizations have a, someone in place. You know, every manager has someone in mind to replace them in the event that they're out for a prolonged period, so we'd like to fill that Monday evening. Okay? Very good. We'll list that. 18, and this is particularly important to me. I spent 30-some years in industrial engineering and did a lot of methods work. I'm proposing that we create, and I will call it an ad hoc efficient methods committee. And by that, I mean, we need a committee to analyze not only what our various departments do, but how they do it. You know, what are our procedures? How are they being executed? What forms do we use? Are they the best we can do? We also need to listen to our investors and developers that want to come to town and grow with Pottstown. They've, some have had experience with us and offer some suggestions. Others have not ventured in to make a firm plan yet, but they've had experiences other places that some claim are better than Pottstown. So to make us more efficient, to make us more user-friendly, to be the best municipality in Montgomery County, I'm going to propose that you grant me permission to have this committee. As a start, I'm recommending that we have five people, five voting members on that, to include Counselor Lebedinsky, who works in this field, Counselor Kirkland, who is very familiar with project management, myself, our borough manager, who will have to deal with the results that come out of this committee, and also Peggy Lee Clark, who is our executive director of PAID, and she's really our liaison between those who want to develop here and us. So I'm going to ask Monday evening that when this is put to a motion, that you approve this committee. It's an ad hoc, I can't say it's going to go on forever, but we've got to take a look at what we do, how we do it, and just find out, how can we do it better? How can we be the best we can be? Okay? We'll list that for Monday. Okay. 19, on the topic of committees. Some time ago, we started the animal committee, and that was begun to change some of the ordinances here in town. To the best of my knowledge, those original concepts have been completed. They took a look at the ordinances, they made the improvements that were necessary. And if I look at the records and reports for 2018, there's been very little activity, not too many meetings, and, you know, to save our staff investing any more time in this, and free up their time to do things that are current and active, I'm going to ask that we eliminate the animal committee. Okay? We'll list that for Monday. Disability space, 19 North Hannover Street.
Yeah, so this was an application that we got from, for a commercial property for a disability space on street. We do have a process for granting disability spaces to residents, but this is one of the first that I've seen come across my desk for an on-street parking space for a commercial business. And I don't know if Chuck or Dan, if you have anything to add to that?
I agree with Justin. This is kind of outside the purview of our existing ordinance, because normally we're looking at folks that have, you know, physical challenges that need spaces in residential districts. Our ordinance does not address this. We've looked into it, and it's our opinion that while you have the ability to create and grant this space, you're not required to do it. Again, there's certainly, this is a more of a business situation that they're looking, I believe, for a space for clientele, and at this point, you're not obligated to grant that, but certainly you can if you feel it's appropriate. While whatever you do is certainly not precedent-setting, I would say that if you do grant it, you certainly may see a lot of other requests for businesses looking for the same kind of accommodation. So it's in front of you, but it's up to you if you want to grant the request, or simply deny it, or not act on it, because you're not required to.
Okay. So we'll, what I'll do, we'll list it, and if someone wants to move on it, we'll listen to that Monday evening. Okay. Board vacancies. Bladed Property Review Committee, there are four one-year terms, and it's my understanding that we already have four, the four existing are reapplying, or no?
We have two. We have two that are, it looks like two that are reapplying, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Kevin Brown's new Cheryl is reapplying.
All right. So we'll have the list for Monday evening. Okay.
And there are certain qualifications. You need a counselor, and you need a Planning Commission member. You need the member of the redevelopment authority, which is Jerry Nugent, so he's kind of an automatic member. So after you have your planning and your counselor, you have two at-large seats. Cheryl Chiallo is one of those at-large seats. She's probably been on that committee.
Since day one.
Since day one, and she's very active and enjoys that role.
Yep. Okay. We'll move on that Monday evening. B is Construction Code Board of Appeals, an alternate. Any applications?
Yep.
None? C is EAC, we have a vacant term which would expire in August 10th, 2019. D is for PDA, there's a five-year term to expire. We have one of their current members, Steve Everett, who has requested to be reappointed for this five-year term. Okay. Pottstown Borough Authority, one five-year term. And I guess that's being held by Aram Ecker right now, and he's asking to be reappointed. Vacancy Board, one one-year term. We have no applicants. Okay. G is the Zoning Hearing Board, one three-year term. And we have an application from Jay Harp, who's been there for a long time.
And then, just to add to that, we do, we do have a vacant term on Harb.
Oh.
We found out about, expires on 4/1/19. So we'd like to get that posted up there, so that we can completely have an applicant.
So that's for April of 2019?
Yes.
She just resigned.
She did just resign.
All right.
So that would be the potential to fill out the rest of the term, and, you know, potentially request to run again once that expires.
Fine. So at this time, let us hear comments from citizens present.
Michael Magr, please.
Two things, just really quick. The first was, I actually did submit a comment to the land bank, proposed policies and procedures. I just want to make sure that's able to be reviewed and all that. And I do just want to very briefly just state that my biggest concern with the policies and procedures as they're currently proposed, is that they give the board a very wide, a lot of discretion in terms of the applicants, they can and can't choose, and reasons for denying, and reasons for accepting them. And I very strongly believe, for various reasons that I put in the letter, that there should be much firmer guidelines in terms of who is able to be, to buy property from the land bank, the qualifications for those people, and then also, and probably more importantly, follow-up procedures that are in place to make sure that the people who are buying the property from the land bank are using the property for the stated mission of the land bank. Rather than just, here you go, here's land, we'll see you later, with a follow-up procedure, we can make sure that the land's being used, and that owners who are abusing the land bank cannot buy any more land from the land bank. That's my first one. That's the biggest one. Also, thank you for your consideration for assistant borough solicitor when it comes up on Monday. I very much appreciate the opportunity to be considered. Thank you.
Do you have a list of offenders that you're speaking about?
I don't have a list of offenders, no.
You brought up the point that you're worried about the land bank selling to people who aren't using the land for the, for the mission of the land bank. So do you have any examples?
Well, they haven't sold any property yet. That's what, they're putting the procedures together to come up with rules and guidelines for.
I thought maybe you had an example, or?
No, well, I included an article in my comment that I hope to get passed around that talks about, although it is a completely different program. Philadelphia's, Philadelphia had a program that was not a land bank, but civil asset forfeiture, but then when they would sell the properties, they wouldn't have these follow-up procedures in place. They didn't have certain guidelines, or they didn't have ways to enforce the guidelines, so that certain government employees were improperly benefiting from the sale of these, and that the properties were being purchased by repeat buyers who were improperly using them, I fear without proper procedure.
Okay. Anyone else?
All right. Chris Gray, please.
I'm here to address a storm drainage issue on Apple Alley, actually directly behind that McDonald's. And I was told last evening of last month that somebody was going to get back to me. I have not heard anything. I was just wondering if, you know, what the timeframe was when somebody was going to get back to me, and also I have some pictures here, and some documentation, you know, showing the issues at hand. I was sort of curious to see if I could use the computer?
It would have to be within the two minutes you have left.
Within three minutes, it's just, but if you can submit them to the staff here.
Yeah.
Okay, I just have a couple pictures here. I can show you the extent of the stormwater drainage issue. This is.
I put up pictures, I said that to him.
Okay, okay. Let's just see, take a look. Basically, we have a small creek bed forming in the back alleyway.
Right.
And it's continually draining into my yard, and in turn going from my yard to the adjacent neighboring yards. And it's eroding, basically, and it's getting worse every time it rains. I mean, even a normal rain, since we had a couple days ago, there was actually like a creek forming in the backyard. And so it's constantly pouring into our backyards, and it's creating, you know, quite a bit of damage to our basements and to our yards itself. So I'm just, you know, would like to see what we could do to have it addressed, whether it's, you know, repaving the alleyway and sloping it away from the houses, or, you know, some type of a drainage system, because I know that there's no, there's no storm drain. The closest storm drain is actually, I believe it's across the street from the Advanced Auto, which is quite a ways down. So, you know, I'm just trying to see how we can address the situation.
We did, we were out to look at it, and we don't have an immediate answer for you, but I will have my Public Works Director get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Eileen Salamon.
How are you? I was just here for the same exact reason.
Okay.
My neighbor, and, you know, I have a lot of erosion happening, like behind my house is causing issues. At the end of the street, there's a big puddle, I think you guys know about that, it's not going away, but winter's coming, and, you know, you're around there in your car, and you're going to slide on the ice, so I think that's something that needs to be addressed somehow.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Did you have, I mean, this was, this past year was the rainy season. Did you have all these problems before we had all this weather?
Not really, no. Got really bad over this summer, to where there's this big gully, and my next-door neighbor smashed up the front of his car back in, after a big rain. He packed out of the garage, didn't realize, he dropped into the gully, and it just ripped off the front of his, underneath of his car. And then he spent a couple hundred bucks, dollars putting buckets of tar from Home Depot that you put in, and, you know, mashing it down. I mean, it's sort of worked, but, you know, it was expensive, and the water's just, you know, it's just running by and running by, carving out more and more and more from right behind our garages.
Okay.
I guess if you get in contact with Chris, but, you know.
Okay, yeah, and we have your number here, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's it?
That concludes comments from Citizens Present.
All right. Anything for discussion? Counselor Lindsey.
First this time. I don't have anything.
Okay. Counselor Pius?
Nothing from them.
Counselor Kirkland?
Michelle, the residents of Pottstown, happy and blessed New Year, and stay safe.
Very good. Counselor Prostle?
Can I say one more thing?
Normally, yes.
Okay, that's all right.
Okay.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Our mayor?
Want to wish everyone a happy New Year, and I unfortunately will not be here on Monday night. I will be coming back from New Orleans, so if you need a tiebreaker vote, just phone it in, and I'll bring the vote for you.
Bringing shrimp?
We'll do that for you.
Happy New Year to all. Meeting adjourned.